Anthony, everyone. Today is Tuesday, March 4th, 2025. It is 4:00 PM. This is a meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Is there a motion to call the meeting to order?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
This meeting will be audio and video recorded. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, some of you gentlemen, we have a poll hearing. This hearing is on the condition, Mass. 2024-50 from Verizon New England Inc. and Hen Star Electric Company doing businesses, EverSource Energy proposing to place new facilities, Poll 104/39.5 on Middle Road. Middle Road installed one joint owned midspan pole, 104P39.5, on the east side of Middle Road, which will be approximately 262 feet northerly from the center line of Hamlin Street. The new pole will be installed in line with an approximately 30 feet south of existing pole, 104P40, and approximately 90 feet north of existing pole, 104P39. Installation is being requested by EverSource to support ongoing construction on both sides of Middle Road and to provide for the distribution of intelligence and telecommunications and the transmission of high and low voltage electric current. There's a motion to call the public hearing to order.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, roll call vote. Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Gasper?
Yes.
And I am a yes. And we have EverSource and Verizon here today. I believe you're a subcontractor from Verizon?
Yes, I am. I threw together and just additional visual what the proposal is. Thank you.
Both the existing poles are staying?
Correct.
Is there a particular reason why it's 30 feet from one and 90 feet from the other? Is it just location of availability because of a driveway?
Perhaps. I'm not the engineer who designed it, but I have to assume that they keep that in consideration as well as the street adjacent to it or driveway adjacent to it perpendicular.
It says something about on just EverSource to support ongoing construction on both sides of Middle Road. What kind of construction are we talking about? Because there's no construction going on on either side of Middle Road.
Okay, well, I'm not part of that project. I'm just here representing Verizon. From my understanding, they're doing upgrades and upgrading the power distribution on that road.
It's not, it's not both sides. Oh, this is part of that. Last time I was here, they gave you guys those maps on the DER projects. This is for the distributed energy resources. These are, these are all new poles coming out of Middle Road. Where the existing poles are, there's going to be new poles replacing those existing poles. This is a midspan pole to stop the sag from the pole to the south of it and the pole to the north because there's new equipment going on these two poles right here. All these, for Middle Road specifically is for some solar farms that I think are approved by the town and are waiting to be interconnected. Or if they're not approved yet, they're, they're not built yet, but they will be built at some point. That's, that's the reason for this particular midspan pole. If you, if you don't think the mid, if you don't want the midspan there and you want us to move sort of these two sets of poles closer, that's another option too. Doesn't have to be this way. This is just the easiest way to achieve the result.
So Anthony, I believe you know what I'm about to say. We're on probably year number two. And I know this isn't your fault, Anthony. We've had this conversation before, but seeing as you're one of the few representatives that shows up and answers my phone call, I'm going to say it again. We need resolution on double poles. We need it. Every Verizon rep, and I know this isn't you because you're not a direct Verizon employee. It's changed multiple times. I've had multiple emails saying, oh, this is your new representative and I can't get a plan put in front of us so I can tell the public when to expect the poles on Middle Road, Main Street to be cleaned up. So I need to insist at this point that before anything else happens, we have Verizon, EverSource, and us in a room and put together a legit plan that tells us the timeline of when they are going to take care of these poles. And I know this is interesting because it's a joint owned venture. Verizon is ultimately responsible for placing the poles. So I'm going to put a lot of weight on Verizon being responsible for this.
Sure.
But once again, trying to get them in the room seems to be a little harder than we expected. Gentlemen, I don't know if you have any issues with this, but my personal opinion is continuing this. Not drastically, but just continuing this until we can actually get EverSource and Verizon in a room to put a plan together.
I do have a update for you.
Right.
So I talked to Ops today. They hired the contractor. Michael's going to be doing the work. They start March 17th. They're going to go from, let's say essentially Town Hall all the way to Robinson. That's the main street, a cushioned cluster project. That should be four to six months. That's moving all of our top wire over to the new poles. And that's, that's, the new wire that they're putting on is a thicker gauge, heavier. That's why the poles are taller. And with that also comes new equipment, reclosers, switch, switch gears. And I think you guys are getting two circuits on those poles also, which is ultimately a good thing, right? So if one circuit goes out, you can literally switch it to the next one. Instead of taking two hours to restore, it might take 10, 15 minutes.
So all the new equipment and then running and changing over your top line still puts us in a situation where we still have?
Hundred percent, right.
Double poles?
Then we're, then we're dependent on Verizon Comcast, any municipal fiber that's left to move before Verizon comes in and takes the poles out.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Gasper?
What Anthony just said is, is, is hundred percent correct, right? Even as fast as EverSource can get to a pole, however long that may be, sometimes they're not great with it and they move their lines. We've been through this rodeo several different times. Then we got to rely on Verizon and we got to rely on cable. And if the town has any equipment, then we got to pay somebody to go in, which I don't think we should. We should be backcharging somebody else or having somebody else move our stuff because if it wasn't for you doing the new poles, we would have no reason after we just hung fiber optic, right? So, look, there's been double poles. I mean, Mr. Hinckley's chairman now, Sluggin Warner was chairman the prior year when I was chairman. It, it, it just goes on and on and on. And there's still double poles sitting out on Middle Road that isn't from any kind of upgrade. It might be from a car accident and those poles are still sitting there from years ago. We're not talking a year ago, two years ago. Some of that crap that's out there is three to five years old. It's unacceptable. And then, you know, you come in and have a request and like, we could feel bad for EverSource that they want to do these new poles with a new grid and everything else and la di da. But the reality of it is, is you have a lot of juice as a utility company to push Verizon in the right direction and cable in the right direction, saying, we're not going to be allowed to install any new poles without the equipment being moved and we got to do it on a more expeditions path, right?
Sure.
And you're not doing it. And we've been sitting down discussing this. We have many that we've continued. I feel the same way as the chairman feels right now. It's just we, we let you do it and we give you something, but we don't get anything in return. I think that's a sad, a sad, sad event.
I agree with you. Verizon's been here. They've heard the story. I don't know what else to do.
I worked with our building commissioner, Andy Bobol, over a solar farm because some of this stuff is the new poles are due to solar farms, right? And we allow them to connect for their connectivity so they wouldn't lose contracts and they wouldn't lose funding and all that, blah, blah, blah. And we had some woman, I think we were with EverSource, Verizon, and whoever this woman was that has this joint venture between the two and certain connections, whether she was from Pennsylvania or Tennessee or wherever it was, she zoomed in on that meeting. Whereas I was actually with Mr. Knox, our electrical inspector, the wiring inspector on that same meeting and we were promised the world, we're going to take care of this. I'm going to do this. I'm going to do that. And after that meeting, crickets from that individual. It just, I mean, we're just, we're not going to take it. And I think the chairman is saying, give us something in return and then we'll start giving something back.
Sure.
Right? But when we're not getting anything in return and you want us to just keep giving, giving, giving? That's, that's a one sided street, right?
No, I'll definitely take it back. We have three sets of groups meeting biweekly with Verizon. We begged them to ju, they still have two poles left on Main Street to do. When was the last time I was in here? I think September. You know, there's, it's gone to two vice presidents and I think we gave until March 1st. And that's why we're setting the two poles next week. So the contractor can start March 17th because we just, we, I hear you. We're out of time. Just taking too long. In, in other towns where we are the lead, it doesn't take this long. The double poles made us stay there long because we're still waiting for Verizon Comcast or whomever to come behind us and remove it. But we set them, we transfer our wires immediately. Even three neighboring towns that are not Verizon set. I wish I could do more for you, but I have no, I personally have no juice to make Verizon do anything. You know what I mean? I can only bring it to the people that do.
That's what we're asking you to do for sure.
Yep.
We know, and I've had this conversation candidly with you, Anthony. I understand this isn't your fault.
Sure.
But you do have the ears of people who directly have ability to fix this.
Yep.
And I'll be relaying the message obviously to people I'm reporting to and have it get to the PM that hired us.
I mean, look, Anthony, we're, we're meeting tomorrow with our legislative delegation.
Yeah.
And yeah, the EverSource rates, you know, the rates, utility rates can be raised. But to be honest with you, I'm going to ask our delegation to look into legislation to find utilities who are in violation of the law. I just looked it up. You guys have, you know, utilities have a certain amount of time to resolve.
Yeah.
And if it's not resolved, it's in violation of the law, but there's no teeth into it. So, you know, perhaps there's some momentum to, you know, given the current climate.
Sure.
To, that, that might maybe see some, some interest there, so.
Ideally, what I would, what I'm going to ask for is, let's say we do like, the contractor starts, we do maybe 200 feet of wire. The very next day should be a Verizon or Comcast truck right behind us transferring their stuff over, right? This way it's not six months between each group doing the transfers. That's what I'm trying to argue for.
And if we could get a schedule of that so we could look at scheduling town fiber?
Totally.
And town streetlights?
Yep. No, the message is that no one should be touching your streetlights at all. No, no taping them on the ground, no taping them to the pole.
My problem is, we talked about that too, Anthony, right? My problem is the taxpayers of a cushion should not be paying to transfer that light fixture to a new pole, right? Well, again, it goes back to the same thing as fiber. If you weren't doing those new poles for either your infrastructure or solar panels, infrastructure of new solar panel development in this town, that pole wouldn't need to be upsized, right?
Sure.
So why are we fronting that bill?
Is there, don't you have a contract with the wire inspector or the, or does he have streetlights? I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, that's coming out of taxpayers' dollars though. And like I'm, like I'm trying to say, if you weren't touching that pole to put it five feet higher in the air because of that regulation of high voltage wires, certain voltage wires have to be so far above the ground, right? For you and beans not to get, you know, radiation or whatever that, that regulation is. It's something to do with that, right? We wouldn't have to be moving our fixtures. So you're costing us thousands of dollars to move light fixtures when we shouldn't be paying to move light fixtures unless you were touching them.
I'll take it back.
So the reality of it is, is either a solar, if it's due to a solar company that you're upgrading the pole height, then you, we should be able to backcharge that solar company, get reimbursed for that solar company for moving that light fixture. It shouldn't be on our taxpayers' back. If it's you doing it for an upgrade of your electrical system and your electrical grid, then you should be backcharging, we should be backcharging you for that light fixture being moved, right?
And town fiber?
Correct. Anything of ours that doesn't really need to be moved unless it, because if it's an upgrade of poles,
Sure.
that should be, we as a town should be able to backcharge either the solar company or you, the utility company.
I'll ask. I'll bring it back and see what they, see what they say.
This pole doesn't affect that March 17th job that you have planned, does it?
This doesn't, no.
Yeah. That's Main Street, you said?
Yep. But next week, I think, what's left for Main Street is it, it goes to Robinson Road. So where Robinson makes them right, that finishes the cluster. I think they're on for next week.
They don't have, I mean, anything that's been over there, we've either approved or haven't seen yet, correct? For poles, new settings?
Correct, maybe. I don't, I don't remember off the top of my head, but it's.
What I'm getting, what I'm getting at is if this one's not directly affecting the March 17th day, I'm still okay with continuing this until I can speak with somebody from Verizon.
Yeah, that's a hundred percent. I'm not.
There's nothing going on, on, I don't know what's going on. As if Middle Road from you are for solar farms because there's no development of solar farms in the next two years. I know there's one way down on Moss's Lane. There's been some new poles placed down Moss's Lane.
Yep.
Maybe a couple on Middle Road, whatever it may be, from where existing poles, you don't need permission from this board, right? To do these poles, but the one is another solar farm proposed right out White's area, which this pole is very close to. It's actually across the street from one of its properties. But there's nothing going on there for a couple of years to come too. So I don't see any reason this pole needs to be placed in this town.
Way ahead. We're way ahead of those farms coming online.
Right.
Literally, yep. It, it is for this. It's all new, Middle Road and I can't, I can't picture the other road off the top of my head. There was two different roads. Those are for DER, Distributed Energy Resources. That's all related to also the four substation upgrades in all four towns.
I believe your map show Middle Road, Main Street, and then it kicks down Hathaway.
Yep, right.
Yeah, it goes across Hathaway because of the substation that's over.
Exactly. The substation specifically increased solar capacity. And then the cluster, I think, is brand new, overhead wire, and I think two circuits. So yeah, I don't, Middle Road, this pole, we don't need it right away. So if you want to extend it again, that's totally fine.
What kind of date we thinking, gentlemen?
We held the vote for another day too bad in September, didn't we?
Yeah.
You got the 18th?
Not this close. It's not going to continue for two years.
No, of course not. Take it out three months. See where we go.
I got, I got a lot of slug boards this month, so.
You say June 2nd. It's not meeting?
Yep. And the election is the 22nd April.
I'm talking June.
So you can't hold anything on the election.
Gentlemen, I would take a motion to continue the public hearing till June 17th at 4:00 PM in the selectmen's meeting room.
Sure.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, roll call vote. Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Gasper?
Yes.
And I am a yes.
You realize that's Bunker Hill, dude.
Surely, it's not a state employee anymore. Don't get that day off, you know what I mean?
No, but you might have people firing at the lights in your eyes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anthony, sorry, one more thing.
Yeah.
If you can find out who our newest rep from Verizon is?
Yeah, it's, um.
If you don't mind, just email me.
Sure.
So I have it there and I have the contact. This way I can reach out myself and make arrangements. Like I said, I know Verizon's not your responsibility, so I'm willing to put some work into it too. But if you can give me the contact.
Absolutely, will do.
Appreciate it.
You got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great day.
All right, meeting minutes. February 11th, 2025, we had a joint meeting with both of the golf committees. Is there a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We have Patriot Half Marathon on June 15th, 2025. I believe this is the same one we do every year. We got Police Department sign off, Fire Department sign off. It looks like we're still waiting on State Police sign off. Is there a motion to?
Motion to, motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I would just ask that we possibly post the map?
Yep.
Of this and all the roads that they've mentioned here about where they're turning so that if people want to go on the website and see it, they can see the date of the marathon, half marathon.
Great idea.
And know when these folks will be rolling through their area town.
Yeah, because we do not shut the roads down for this, I believe.
Correct.
So city, if you could get that schedule on the town website so people know along with the date, it'd be good. There's a motion, a second we voted, we're good on that. We have a new business coming into town. New York Paper Company, 158 Main Street, put an application in for the common vic. Just to replace a business that was already there. We did get notice from the Board of Health saying that they approved it. They just haven't given us the paperwork yet.
The only thing that, Mr. Chairman, the building commissioner would have to do is make sure that the number of seats and parking spots align with our bylaws.
Yep. I briefly spoke with the.
Free chairs on parking spot, just so you know. So I know they put a map in here, but I don't know what they previously did with the deli that was there and.
There's only about, you know, four or five chairs there previously with the deli.
Five or six parking.
Well, they have the whole backside of the gas station where the employees park too. There's about six spots over there that nobody even parks in because it's across the, across the parking lot too, so. But very good point, as long as they meet their requirements.
I would just make a motion to approve the common vic pending approval from the building commissioner, Mr. Andy Bobol.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Mr. Kelly, we got some formats, some schedules to go through here.
I've got a notebook in front of you. It's similar to last year for the budget. It's got the, a whole section in front that's deals with revenue and gives you some backup in that, a little more than you got last year, but the difference this year is that aside from seeing a couple of the past year's budgets, when you compare past to present and the request, you're also going to see the total expended for 2004, 2024. And that'll give, that'll give you the one year glimpse you will see. Year to date for 2025 with the date underneath to tell you when we took that snapshot and then the request for 26. There are a couple of departments we're waiting on. One is something, is a department that Mr. Gasper and I already talked to, that the department here had proposed a reorg and figuring out with accounting how we'd combine two budgets into one. We're still doing that with account numbers. And then the town clerk's center budget in, but it was locked and Nick and I, IT and I still have to figure out how to unlock it. And I sent a request to her. She's on big picture to then give us the key. And then I met with golf, half of the golf team yesterday. And we haven't put that into this format yet. Now, as we know, the preliminary from the schools took, the increase for the schools is three times the increase of our revenue.
Both schools?
Both schools. So we are going to have to work through what they're doing as well as looking at our budget. At least 40% of our budgets are no change at all because they're very small. And then a number of others that just change as far as the collective bargaining agreements. I wanted to give this to you to view it. And if there's need of any changes for the format, let me know. Also, in a couple of departments, I gave you multiple options just to start discussion in those departments on maybe how we could shake and bake them a little bit.
Chairman?
Mr. Warner?
I just think as we go through this budget, there's a couple of things. One, I like the fact that you put in what we actually spent in 2024, right? Account fiscal year '25. But I think for large departments like DPW, police, definitely school, I'd like to see, is it possible to get the data on what was spent in like the last two months before the fiscal year ended, you know, like May, June? I think that's, that would be interesting, right? To see where.
For '24?
Yeah, right? Just to kind of drill down even further. We're curious as to, are we spending more money towards the end? I think you know where I'm going, right? I, I have great trust that we're not in a use it or lose it mentality in town. But I just want to get that.
You could also look at the town budgets for '25 and see the, because most of them were done either at the end of January or February, where they were as at that point.
Right.
And you could see if they'd spent stuff six or seven, eight months in or whether they haven't spent anything yet.
Yep. So the only thing I would say on that, I, I agree with Selectman Warner a hundred percent on his idea. The only thing I was, I was going to caution the board is when you do look at this, this is something that we've done, you know, decades ago on the Alan Patino and Kathy Doan. Most people remember that time is when you look at something and you say there's a thousand dollars in a line item and there's only a hundred dollars spent, whatever it may be. And we're seven or eight months through the year, you'd be like, wow, you don't, you don't need it. There's certain budgets that they don't pay out until like the last few months of the, like, say the last quarter of the calendar year. So they'd be like software agreements, things like that. There's certain budgets that have certain characteristics of it than others where some of it may look like, whoa, and it's only being spent that year. But most of those are mostly like software agreements, you know, contractual.
Contracts.
Technology wise, things like that is, you know, we get billed at the end of the year, Mr. Gasper, we don't get billed at the beginning of the year. Okay, that's fine. I understand that. But we should start really identifying that. I think it's a good practice for FinCom to understand as well, right? So we don't waste time talking about a budget line item too much. And then we find out, oh, I forgot to tell you, after half an hour dialogue, that bill doesn't come until, you know, May, April, May, or whatever.
Similarly, in revenue, you, when you look at the automobile excise tax, you know, that bill is in the spring. So we're still seeing stuff come in now. But like the reverse of what Mr. Gasper said is true with, for example, we pay the pension bill at the beginning of the year one time and we get a discount.
Yeah.
So we can definitely, we've put some notes in the margins, but we can put a lot more.
I hope we don't ever get to a situation like this, but.
I, I hope we don't ever get to a situation like this, but if we have to get to a spending freeze at the end of the year, whether that's controlling overtime costs or material costs or whatever, right, we just, to have that, um, a few of it would be really good. And then, and then again, I, I think we're in a, this is about this year, but it's also thinking out to the future and what type of services we provide and, you know, we should be looking at ways to consolidate positions or eliminate positions, uh, reprogram, put money, invest into other, you know, services provided. Um, it's just a, just a good exercise to go through rather than just saying, okay, we've done it this way every year, we're going to do the same thing over and over again, submit the same-
Status quo.
Status quo, same business model. But, you know, maybe there's efficiencies that we can create that we haven't looked at, so.
Absolutely. And the more data we have, the easier it is for us to make sound decisions, so. I like, I like the format, by the way.
One or two places, uh, we had option one, option two on the top. And when the punch came through, it took out the middle of the option label. So if you get confused about having two or three budgets, it's because they were different options and, uh, we can discuss how that goes. There are some, uh, margin notes in most of those.
Yep. Cool.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Gaspar?
So one of the, one of the biggest, I think, problems for us moving forward is, and Dave alluded to this, is we really need to start dialing into certain budgets and looking at where funds are being applied, right? Because last year we, we had a massive deficit, there were certain cuts that were made that just aren't sustainable over the long term, right? We did what we had to do to get out of that last year. I think that there's going to be some makeup in certain budgets that we need to, if we do have cost savings from X, Y, and Z, we're going to need to look at that before we just let that money float somewhere else. We need to look at that and say, we need to go back to, you know, A, B, and C's budgets and say, we need to adequately fund those line items that weren't adequately funded, you know, last year, right? And so there's going to be, it's an unfortunate situation, but, you know, we, we can't continue doing what we're doing is skeletonizing our budgets and then just freeing up that cash for, you know, others to be taken, right? We have liability on our side of town that needs to be funded, right? Public safety is one of the biggest ones that we all have concern over. So we could save fifty, a hundred grand from other budgets, we might need to just take that fifty, a hundred grand and reallocate to what we believe is-
Yeah.
more pertinent places to keep that funded, right? So just because we cut fifty or a hundred grand out of, you know, X, Y, and Z's budget, that money's technically is, you know, even that is going to end up moving over to here, but it's still level funded budgets, right? We're level funded on our end. So it's the amount of money that we're absorbing out of new growth in, in Prop two and a half levy, which we're not a big taker of that money, right?
The fixed costs, insurance, pension, uh, and utilities eat more than-
More than what we got in new growth this year, right?
I know we had talked about it and it may be like pocket change, but we had talked about moving surplus properties, you know, like these little paper streets and all these little-
The small lots, twenty grand and on-
We were at town meeting. I mean, so we've got that authority to do it. I think we should probably, it, it is kind of a budget issue because, look, we just met with the schools. If, if we can generate some revenue that's used, that we could use for a one-time expenditure, right, we, we went through, we went through that bylaw process for a reason. And I think if we, we should do that, we should try to target that, um, now. And if it's, again, if it's not a lot of mu, whatever it is, it's, it's, it's a value to it, right? If it's putting it into beautification or some, whatever it is, right? It, it just to, to not do it, I think would be a mistake. So I think we should look at that as well during this budget cycle, how we can, how their pro, how their properties that we need to, that we can offload.
Yeah, well, he did pass-
Library is one of them, right? The, the, I got kind of a couple of people kind of hammered that out from historical on the master plan committee in saying, what are we doing with the library? What are we doing, you know, it's falling apart, right? We need to go get an appraisal on it. The one thing I will say that's really, that's benefited our lapse in time of passing that bylaw on the other twenty thousand is some new laws have changed now with the Healy administration and now certain lots that were ten thousand and larger in the past, um, can be built on. And we own a few lots that are like that. So I'm glad we didn't sell off a ten thousand, twenty thousand square foot lot for twenty-five, fifty thousand, because if that's technically a buildable lot, that lot's now a hundred and fifty, a hundred, two hundred thousand, right?
Yeah.
It's big dollars. So it's advantageous for the town, it's, it's a great place to put that one-time revenue. That's all it really is, right? It's, I don't think Selectman Warner by any stretch of the imagination is trying to say, yeah, let's sell off, you know, five hundred thousand dollars worth of real estate and then let people budget it. It's, you can't do that, it's a one-time revenue source. So for capital, like he's explaining to us, that's really where that funding could only go, right?
So very good point. So we should definitely bring up that list again, because it wasn't a big list of twenty thousand square feet and under and, and dive in and, and see which ones would be applicable for that and then, you know, whether we have to, how we have to list them.
I assume that the board would want to deal with the bigger budgets and as far as, uh, anything that's a serious reorg or a serious change. Uh, the others, you want to put them in, uh, on a secondary list for, some of them are very short money.
Yeah.
And, but I don't think the board can finalize any budget until we see what's going on with the revenue figures. The advantage of June town meeting is maybe the House will be done their budget and we can see if there's an increase. But other than that, uh, you've got to wait to see what the schools do because as I said right now, they're three times the size of the revenue increase.
Yep. Well, we have the schools set up for the eighteenth, correct?
Uh, the, uh, Krishnath schools will not finalize their budget until after the eighteenth. So they can come in and talk about it, but they won't be finalized. So if you want to, I would bring OC and, and deal with them on that day.
If they're not, if they're not, if they're not at the final point yet, I mean-
And I, I would-
Come and talk about stuff that's not finalized.
I, I, I mean, if you could bring OC in and then you could take care of all of the budgets that are no change or whatever and get through those quickly on that day, that would be good. Uh, the other issue, uh, is, uh, I would like to have the board at that point start to look at the free cash and the articles.
Correct.
We've put some articles over. I will tell you one that Mr. Gaspar and I talked about, what was the library and the fact that we've got some prices to move those two monuments.
Yep.
They're not cheap, but you're going to have to move them if you're going to-
Yeah.
Uh, change the, uh, ownership of the library and then Mr. Gaspar can get out there with his medical metal detector and find-
Time capsule.
We know what it's on, it's, it's, it's about, but we're not disclosing it, all right?
A question, I, I guess it's budget town meeting related, but, so the master plan committee, as it is, do you think that they'll have some recommendations for the, the town meeting?
I, I don't believe it, it can be done that fast. We could try to do, I have a meeting-
The reason why I ask is-
I have a meeting next week with the planning board chairman, the planner and Serped to discuss what they, what their thoughts on how to move and what to do with a master plan. I think the committee's got some differences of opinions, that's the whole object of meeting with the planning board chairman, the planner, Serped, to try to figure out what the, what their scope of services were and then what the master plan committee's thinking of doing, right? I, I, we kind of discussed it last go around, it's kind of, we should be looking at the two thousand eight version because it's an update, right? It's all we're really doing is let's look at what's in there and there's like seven chapters in that two thousand eight version. Let's look at what we've done or what can take, what we think can be taken out. And then in each chapter, whatever Serp, Serp's recommendation, planner and planning board, we, we might want to add into each chapter. So I think the fastest way to expedite that process is just to go through chapters and just say, let's get this done, look at this chapter, get it done, look at this chapter, get it done. And I think that's really all it is, is an update. So we could see how fast we can move, but we're already in march.
Right. The reason I'm asking is if it's outside of the master plan committee, again, I keep looking at that property on South Main Street, which has essentially turned into a de facto junkyard, um, and, you know, across from the Mobile Home Park.
Yep.
And if there's some bylaw change that needs to be done, if it's through the master plan committee, great, and if it's not this June, you know, maybe it's going to fall. Or independent of that, to see how we can rectify that situation. Because it, I, it's, it's unacceptable. And if it means repealing, but what's, I, I don't know, I don't know what the solution is, but if this, you know, if you, you've got the best and brightest on this master plan committee, you've got Concom, you've got, you've got everybody. So, Mr. Gaspar, you could take it back to that group?
We can, I think, Mr. Rogers, the fastest way to act on it, we'd, it would really be planning to with building, the building commissioner, look at what's allowed for zoning. And I think we have an enforcement problem there because that's not an allowed use there, right? And I think that we've been sending citations for quite a while, but nothing's acting on. I don't know why we haven't gone to a court and had it ordered by a court that certain things-
Found out from the-
Certain things need to be done, but I think the fastest way to, I mean, you'd have to retract from that zoning area, whatever that allowed use is, right? But then it falls under the grandfather statute, right? So that's, that's pre-existing non-conforming. It's a little tricky on how we're trying to shake the salt shaker.
Yeah.
You know?
If there is any particular project or purchase, capital purchase, that a board member is interested in, I'd appreciate them letting us know.
When is the, uh, the deadline we put for articles was on the eighteenth?
Yeah, but, uh, this board can, uh, they, this board drafts the law.
Correct.
So this board can put in what it wants.
Yeah. I just, I want to get a good look at all of them first and see, and, you know, obviously we're not dealing with a, a bunch of free cash this year.
No, and you've, uh, we've got to determine because the rollover of the roof band, school roof band happens, you've got to determine, uh, what, whether you're going to pay off part of that, all of it, how you're doing it. You've got, uh, a number of, uh, issues such as you haven't bought, you didn't buy patrol carts last year and there's no room in the budget this year for patrol carts. So that would be, even though I don't like to see that, that would be a free cash issue.
It's all part of that budget talk, right? So we did take the Cruises out last year, but they were pretty high priced and whatever, I think it's a hundred and seventy, five thousand dollars or something for two Cruises. So that comes back to the board again for what does the board, what is the pleasure of the board? You know, all the pens are, when you look at the smaller budgets that Mr. Kelly's talking about, we, you know, we haircut as much as we can and strip them down as much as we can, what's that cumulative savings on what we just, that practice we just did? And maybe that means funding something that was defunded last year.
Correct.
That's entirely up to the board, right? And then that's something that we really need to pay attention to because if we don't do something sooner rather than later, the situation gets worse.
Yep.
Right? It never gets better. So it's something that we need to wrap our arms around and that's why I would prefer, I know Mr. Kelly was saying kind of opposite of what I was thinking is we could look at all the smaller budgets, but just because it's a small budget and it may look and appear to be level funded-
Yep.
Doesn't mean it still needs to be funded that way.
Correct.
So that's what we need to be looking at. I could, I could drop the top by adding a budget that probably you could pull fifteen, twenty thousand dollars out of, right? Versus what appears to be a level funded budget.
Correct.
Reshuffle some funds. That's what needs to be done.
Putting everything in the appropriate-
If it needs reshuffling money versus taking money-
Yeah.
Right? It just allows, unfortunately, for other monies, people to be, and let's face it, there's always two sides, right? You've got education and you have town side, right? Public safety, DPW, things of the like. But you have to continue, do your best to continue services as expected.
Correct. So right now, the only joint meeting we have, did Old Colony confirm on the eighteenth?
Yeah.
So, yeah, let's play out enough of that and we'll deal with the, our schools when they are closer to the-
I would, I would suggest possibly that you talk to the chair of the school committee. We do not want them to wait until the week before town meeting.
Absolutely not.
Because Mr. Gaspar and I last year ended up spending two weeks of holy hell trying to get a budget out before, before the publishing date.
Yep.
It was a difficult time.
Yep.
You remember we postponed town, we postponed town meeting by two weeks because of that, right?
Absolutely. All right. Anything else on budget, gentlemen?
No, I think you had to nail it on that, Mr. Chairman, when it came to articles, right? Let departments submit articles and then we'll have a conversation around those requests and maybe other ways to, to do certain things in the town, right?
Yep.
We have to wait and see what people come in and propose to us.
Yep. All right. Anybody got a selectmen's announcement?
Do not.
Yeah, I would, um, I just want to announce and I want to keep it on the radar. And I know, Mr. Chairman, you always do it about the open vacant positions on committees and commissions and boards and things of the like, but I would like to just stress out if we have anyone out in the community that's interested in being a ZBA clerk, we have somebody that volunteered to fill that void until we find somebody. So I don't want to be just taking advantage of that individual and his services that he's providing, um, to us, great, great individual, we all know him, Mr. Sullivan, but, um, you know, I don't think he's looking to do this long-term. So we do have a senior workoff program that we could do something with as well. Plus, there's a budget there, it's basically, I wrote down, probably six to eight hours, maybe a little bit more in a month, depending on how many cases they have, and, and basically one meeting a month to attend, and they usually last two hours. So if anybody out there is interested in, in being a clerk for our zoning board of appeals, again, putting in about six to eight, maybe ten hours a month, um, paid, obviously, and then one night a month for ZBA, um, please submit a letter of interest to the board of Selectmen's office.
Are you having an announcement? What'd you got?
Uh, the Old Colony men's basketball team, uh, was the back to, they won the state vocational championship. This is back-to-back, uh, first time in the history of Old Colony, and I believe the first time in the state where, uh, they won the vocational tournament. So hats off to Coach Treyhan and his team, um, to get them back in like we did last year to present them with some, uh, recognition and citations.
Yeah, that's huge.
Hopefully we can do that, it's a big deal and great group of young athletes who really work hard, get the most of their ability and really scrappy, so hats off to them. And Mr. Treyhan, who is an Krishnath resident.
Excellent. Congratulations. Uh, I'll keep it short. Selectmen's announcements for me are going to be, just to remind the gentleman, my colleagues, that today was the first meeting in March. This was the fee schedule deadline. I didn't put it on the agenda because we're still missing a couple. So, Mr. Kelly, if you could reach out to anybody that is, hasn't updated their fee schedule, I noticed we got most of them in, um, just so we can review. I don't think that's at the top of our list when we're going through budgets, but I'd like to have them, uh, just to go through it. And if they're not drastic, empower the department heads to implement the change and go from there.
We should vote for, for-
Correct.
Yeah, it's proper to, uh, if it involves a regulatory change on any board.
Yeah. I was more referring to the fact that some people had like structural changes, year-over-year changes, kind of like how Chief Farland had done, did, did it before, he said, this year, then next year, maybe this, you know? So put together their plan and present it, not for actual approval. That's pretty much it. Uh, we did have an executive session scheduled, we're going to pass over that. With that being said, is there any motion to adjourn?
So who?
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Aye.